I'm not there.
All right, welcome everybody, formal city council meeting, we're so glad you're here. We love to have participation, be sure to tell a friend, bring them along next time and the time after formal city council rules, so please no electronic devices allowed in the chamber except as authorized by state law government code five five one point oh two three. All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and let's stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, indivisible. Please be seated. All right, we have four council members here this evening, council member Chris Rodriguez is out due to illness. City secretary, proof of notice of meeting.
Thank you, mayor, the notice of this meeting was posted by two P M on Friday afternoon.
Okay, thank you, any public comments, city secretary?
We have one, Laura Gold, Ward three, commenting on chapter twenty three.
Okay, Ms. Gold, come on up. Yes, ma'am, please. Please state your name and your ward when you come to the podium and please remember that council members can't respond.
Timer? Good evening, my name is Laura Gold, I'm in Ward three. I came to talk about chapter twenty three and some of the revisions that are on the possible changes. I wish to express my opposition to the end idea of installing parents city council meetings. While I respect the right of individuals to practice their religion, I believe it's inappropriate for public officials to schedule prayer at government functions or open government meetings with prayer religious ritual. U S Supreme Court has issued decisions about prayer legislative meetings. But this does not mean that legislative bodies must schedule prayer. They are free to embrace secularism and to be responsive to citizen complaints and the need to avoid excluding constituents. Citizens of all religions or no religion are compelled to come before local government bodies on civic and secular matters for variances, sewers permits and etc. They should not be subjected to a religious show or test. I think that people should just arrive at their meetings ready to work. When government bodies lend their power prestige to religion, it amounts to an endorsement that excludes one fifth of the population because today one in five Americans are nonreligious. When prayers are non denominational, there is no way a government body can conduct a prayer that will not inevitably exclude, divide, or embarrass at least some taxpayers and constituents. I don't think it's the council's intention to cause exclusion, but it will happen. Regarding deadlines and increasing transparency, as a civic minded member of the public, I feel frustrated with a short amount of time the public has to read a city council agenda and then have to wait two more days for information about the agenda items and what can be an extremely detailed council member packet of supporting documents. Y'all know that I would like the packet publicly available by close of business on Friday afternoon when the agenda is posted prior to the council meeting the following Tuesday. Regarding redactions, if items are to be redacted, the public should know what types of information have been redacted. Furthermore, I propose greater transparency and accessibility by using optical character recognition software for the city secretary office to scan agendas and supporting documents into PDF. Using OCR makes contents of packets agendas and minutes especially lengthy ones quickly accessible to everyone. I believe these changes would improve transparency and quite possibly help increase civic participation. Thank you for your time and attention to my concerns.
Thank you. All right, city secretary, any more public comments?
That concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you. There are no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. For the reports, city secretary, if you would please start a timer. City mayor report, I just wanted to let council know that this morning I met with this group Water in the Desert, they're gonna have a conference on January eighteenth at Sewer Ross State University regarding water in the desert. The individuals that I met with were Christie Muse and she's based out of Austin, Billy Tarrant, who is here and also Jeff Bennett and they are with collectively with what is called the Rio Grande Joint Venture. They're interested in our wastewater treatment plant and in our initiatives regarding repairing our freshwater system. And since they were interested and to remind the public too, I let them know that we have a workshop schedule on December fifth at four thirty, so they're going to attend. Because they tell me there's more monies available if we use certain languages and we do or certain words and if we do certain things when we're looking at grants and other possibilities. So I reminded them it's actually Tuesday, December fifth at four thirty and then January sixteenth at four thirty, so they plan to be in attendance so that they can share their expertise with us. They have background in hydrology and other water concerns, so I just wanted to let you guys know that they'll be coming and that they're having this conference and it's open to the public and it's free. Okay, and then that's it for the mayor report, we have no city attorney report, city manager.
I'm just a few updates, the end of year, it's always a crazy time for the city. We were able to close the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three books in order to open for the twenty three, twenty four. And for us, it's a little hectic, just so everyone understands, we have to close and open and get payroll done in the same week. So it's a lot of checks and balances and getting things taken care of. And but just because we closed the books doesn't mean we're done. We're managing the accruals, capital assets depreciation and continued regulation reconciliation to prepare for the audit. I really just want to take this time now that we've gone over that hurdle to thank the finance team for committing the extra time during the two weeks, including Saturday. And we have a standing policy within the city, they don't get time off the first and last week of the fiscal year. And I want to thank all the departments who assisted. We spent about two months cleaning up purchase orders, making sure everything was legit. If it was backordered, it had been canceled, if it needed to be paid. And we have a new finance team, three of them have been here for less than a year, so they did a great job. Some of the city updates that are going on within departments. And new fiscal year, so they're all eager to spend their money. The gas department continues their distribution integrity management program, which is the replacement of steel to poly. So you'll see them out and about trying to get that taken care of to meet the necessary requirements by the end of this year. And they've also gone ahead and started doing their research to prepare for the request for proposal for the automated meters for the Fort Davis area. So hopefully that will come out within the next month, so we can start getting quotes and see what it would take to get those up and running on automated meters. The water department has been truly focused on the lead and copper inventory for the required boarding by T C Q. And we're looking forward to getting this under our belt. We have purchased and are utilizing the ISRI geographical information system. And so we've got several members of the team working to get all the information to create the necessary documents in the forms. I'm kind of excited to have a new resource for them to be able to utilize. This will also tie back into the city to assist with an asset management program. Kind of know what do we have out there. It is geographical, so you get to see it kind of like in a Google sign and you get the different layers of what's there. Our gas department has been utilizing it for over ten years, so at some point they can actually be combined and the layers can actually be shown on top of each other. So ideally between the streets, water wastewater and the gas department, you could have one map with every line that's out there in the city, so when we have upcoming planning projects, it would really be a great asset. We're underway on that. And of course, they're continuing to address work orders, water leaks and sewer backups. Today's latest and greatest was a water leak on seventeen oh three that they were addressing. It did take them a little bit of time. And we continue to push for the de-licensing within the water department. Dominique Rubio received his last week that gives us four D water licenses. One C license, one C wastewater and one B wastewater. Slowly but surely, we're getting everyone registered, trained and then taking the test. And we do encourage our employees that even if they don't pass the first time, that's okay, these tests aren't designed to be easy. And so we do encourage them and we have an employee who is going to take his test either this week or next week. It's getting in with Sewer Ross. The wastewater treatment plant is now fully staffed with three full time employees. This will help them kind of get caught up on some of the things that need to be repaired. And some of the big concerns have been just the overall maintenance of the facility, which includes weed eating. And Abel's department has been generous in going out there and assisting, believe it or not, we have to say T C Q compliant on that. We cannot have weeds and overgrown grass and things all around the plant and including our well, so they've been helping. Recycling center, they are still pending a part for the mulcher. And so we're waiting for that to be brought back into the city so we can get the mulcher fixed. We're looking at about another probably four weeks, it's really up in the air. And I did make a a guess here, but I believe the school district is currently taking branches for their homecoming bonfire. So if anyone needs to get rid of some branches, homecoming is I believe this week and not a hundred percent sure, but it's been brought to my attention that they can go that direction. And the police department has been busy nonstop, this month especially. And one of their priority projects was community engagement and getting back into the community and having that face to face relationship. Well, this month, and I just picked the top couple. We have the I S D homecoming, we have Zuzu Burke Memorial, they have a blood drive coming up, Red Ribbon Halloween and about four other officers are scheduled for training this month in addition to all of the five K parades, anything else going on that they assist with, so they are quite busy this week. The finance team, I guess, said we're moving forward with the new fiscal year. We put in some internal changes and procedures to help assist them as well as preparing all of the necessary R F Ps for the year. All the departments, we had a sit down conversation on Monday, kind of get an idea of, okay, these are your projects, this is what you want to do, let's move forward with it. Get a schedule of when they want to complete these things because some of them are dependent on weather, timing, staffing. I know poor Jennifer would love to get her kennels up and repainted and fixed and all that, but she's a little overcrowded right now, nowhere to put the dogs. So we kind of have to time it along when they have a lower population there. And other than that, all the computers have been purchased and arrived for the department to request them as part of their priorities. And all of the teams have been tasked with their, let's get this done list.
Okay, many questions?
Just a quick question, Megan, two things, one, you expect you'll have last year closed out enough so you know what the overs and unders were?
So cleaning up the purchase orders was very beneficial to have it done sooner. I'm looking at hopefully the second meeting in November, only because the accruals are what usually get us. But if we did as good of a job as I think we do with our P Os, it shouldn't even be that long.
Thank you.
Good deal. Councilmember Sundadi, councilmember Nance.
Of course.
Councilmember Stokes.
Good job, Megan.
All right, good job. Okay, and we have some terrific employees and I'm proud to hear that we're getting those licenses that we need. All right, so no city staff updates, no public hearings, we will move on to the consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you, mayor, tonight's consent agenda contains four items, item one, approval of October third, twenty twenty three, regular minutes. Item two, approval, are approved the position of the assistant director of public works, position and job description. And item three, approval or approve the recreation coordinator position and job description. Item four, approve fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three fourth quarter investment report.
Okay, I need a motion.
If we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, let's vote to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it passes unanimously. All right, moving on to information or discussion items, item number one, if you would read it, please, councilmember Stokes, this is yours.
Brewster County lays on update. Once again, I've included just a little synopsis as how I saw the commissary's court is playing out. I saw no big huge thing there, they're strapped for places to put all their old files. Ah, so I was gonna ask Greg, can we just put some of ours under the tax office? When he puts in a floor because it's part of it's dirt, so it sounds lovely, I can't wait to go down and see when they get it finished. And other than that, it was a great little meeting.
Okay, good. Okay, any questions, comments, councilmember Stevens?
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Sundadi.
One question with Judge Channing here would be, I watched that meeting. I saw that when y'all appropriated the money, the ARPA money over to payroll and I heard it mentioned that there was ten ARPA projects y'all were working on. I was kind of wondering what that, just out of curiosity, what those are that the county's working on, some of the ARPA projects.
Judge, do you mind coming up to the podium? Okay, sorry, I know you were here as a spectator, I hope we don't scare you away. Okay, yes.
Actually, we've got about twenty five, you know, truth, but it's everything from studio water supply generators to this hoarding problem we seem to have with files that we need to work on. We're doing, we, we decided this last meeting to contribute some money to the A I S D childcare center. Let's see what else we got on there, we've got ambulance bay, we're gonna cover in for marathon's gonna get an ambulance, so we're gonna cover in some of their open spaces, so we'll have it. Some road based material, it was all off my head, I have a list, I'll get you a copy.
I was just curious, and then I was also curious about the total amount of ARPA that y'all received.
We received one point, right at one point six million dollars.
Good. Okay, any questions, councilman? Any questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Judge, for stepping up, we appreciate that, sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, so moving on to information or discussion item number two, discuss the possibility of creating a partnership with Sewer Ross University, the city, the county, and possibly using the far from ordinary tagline and partnership with Sewer Ross on their marketing campaign through the use of hotel occupancy tax. All right, so I just wanted to bring council members up to what we have discussed. It's very early in the discussions, but Sewer Ross State University hired a marketing firm and they did a lot of research back in the spring and had people come in and answer questions regarding the college and they didn't have anyone from the college there, it was just the marketing team so they could get an idea. And Sewer Ross decided based on what this marketing firm created to use far from ordinary as their tagline. So they're gonna have billboards and flyers and and templates and things like that and it will say far from ordinary on it. And for example, one of the billboards might be, this is my ride and it's a cow boy or girl on a horse or something like that to to showcase our rodeo program at the college and they'll say far from ordinary, so the county and the city, we thought, well, wonder if we tagged in on that, it's a synergistic effect. I know with the Alpine Business Alliance, they've also talked about coming up with a tagline or a brand, something like that, and we're trying to figure out what would be something that's catchy. And far from ordinary, it's synergistic, Sewer Ross has offered to put visit Alpine and something advertising Brewster County also on these handouts. The thing is, they want fifty thousand dollars from the city and fifty thousand dollars from the county. Now, we've thought about negotiating with them and asking how about twenty five and twenty five? And then also I was speaking with our our city manager and we thought, well, I wonder if we come up with our own. And so Megan and I have batted around the idea and we don't have to pay anybody to use this, but Alpine, where the extraordinary begins. It kind of goes along with far from ordinary, where the extraordinary begins. So those are some of the discussions that we've had and Megan, would you like to speak on that because you were talking about the extra in that, how you could play off of that?
Well, for me, and I know that Geo actually and I have talked about looking at rebranding the city in the direction we want to go. But it's having that catchy tag that we utilize with our employees, we attract, you know, and recruit, why are you coming here? You're coming here because you know we're extraordinary. An extra could actually be an acronym for something and we could utilize that for employee appreciation, we could utilize it for employee awards. We really could build up more and more on it. It's just a tagline right now, it's not a rebrand, it's just something that we could build up to get that enthusiasm and to get the the momentum going within our departments. But it kind of like the mayor said, it ties back into the far from ordinary, you know, we're extraordinary. And maybe each of us kind of have our own little play on the whole process. For me, the question I asked the mayor is, you know, fifty thousand out of our hot funds and we are spending those funds more and more and more, which is good, that's what it's there for. But I, for me, it's like, I'd like to know what exactly are we getting? Our city seal already has the home of Sewer Ross State University in it, so we've been advertising them for a while. I just like, how much do we charge?
No, and that was something Megan and I discussed, yes, yes.
But I, I think as we, the city is, you know, we are definitely changing and we're moving in a different direction. I mean, we need to look at our seal, we need to look at our mission statement, you know, we talk about core values and you know, we want our employees to be, you know, that beyond that extra, you know, we, we brag about them regularly. You know, give them something that they can, you know, I have the one team and that's what I've been using, we are one team. No, but I'd love to start adding more to it and then ultimately rebrand the city.
Okay, so the point of this was just to bring council up to speed on some things, we're batting around some ideas so that you can start thinking of your own.
We'll all think of stuff.
Anyway, it's something that we, yes, as we try to promote Alpine and attract employees and things like that. So it's just different taglines, okay, Mr. Rujia, would you?
Thank you, Chris Rujia, Director of Tourism, the question of hotel occupancy tax use. Sewer Ross is undoubtedly a driver of room nights, they're a valuable partner in so many ways and there's no reason they could not be an incredibly valuable partner in advertising. But as I think we're kind of looking at it, the city's hotel occupancy tax collections are gonna be used and we need to be sure that the city has input, the city gets the information that's needed and can ensure that the city's interests are represented. So there's a couple different approaches, it's the, the council, of course, could look at fund balance, which that's something that's kind of an ongoing process. Once the finance department has lots of free time, which who knows when that's gonna happen. To really come up with, you know, here's the, here's the true fund balance picture, here's the required contingency and then coming up with the strategy for using, because there's, there's a not insignificant fund balance that could be used strategically. We don't know exactly how much it is, so that is a possible source for this as a one time thing the council could vote on to appropriate, there's no question there. It also, since it's hot funds, is it essentially a grant request, is that something that you want the hotel occupancy tax committee to review their proposal in any way, there's, so that's just things I toss out for. There are a couple of different channels it could take to kind of vet what is their proposal and I would suggest that the university would, we would want the university to open their process to the city and that could be me representing you for advertising purposes as I usually do, it could also be we have a hotel occupancy tax committee meeting and they come and present as many council members as want, you know, attend that or it could be at a council meeting, obviously, but yeah, I completely agree that transparency is key. Throwing fifty thousand dollars of hotel tax money because they say they have a marketing plan, which might be great, does not ensure that it's targeted for over not for the hotel industry of Alpine, which were legally mandated to use those funds. So if we can see that the, the ways that they're looking to use that fund is reaching channels we're not taking as much advantage of, is really geared towards the kinds of activities that are gonna drive room nights, which is, you know, orientations, family visits, you know, it could be lots of things, but, but we want to, I would suggest that we want to really make sure, I think I would love to work more together to, and I'd love to see the county and the city and the university working together more. And so, yeah, that's it, but I do, I do agree, we need to get more information and at least one seat at the table for those conversations.
If we end up coming up with, you're gonna want to use it, right? Would you use it?
Well.
Would it overlap in your visit Alpine Texas stuff?
Sometimes, you know, a lot's gonna depend on each. I don't, I don't dislike it at all. Most of what I'm doing these days is actually not tagline based, so much of it is, we're either promoting a specific like moment event that here's the, here's the lever that's gonna bring somebody here and when it's not that, a lot of the time it's more in the form of, of article content, you know, that we're, we're paying a magazine or a website or something like that to kind of host a story about us and it's not really so much, it's more about getting those kinds of media pieces out there for people to read and so where there are like little display ads and stuff like that, a taglines could be very appropriate and we would just go on case to case, you know, this is, does it fit here, hey, let's use it. And, and if I absolutely see the value in terms of in terms of the city speaking to itself, like Megan's has the one team thing because we're and not, and when I say speaking to itself, I'm talking about speaking to our staff, but also our residents and that's something where we might see overlap between when we're talking to a potential visitor and we might not. But it's the two, there's, it's one of the most challenging things about tourism promotion is that it's invisible to the resident because when we're doing our job, we're talking to people who aren't here. But so I'm really starting to babble, so.
No, it sounded great, I think I remember Nancy stayed there for just a moment.
I've had a question, how old is the heart of the big bend tag that we've used that you guys have?
How old is it?
When did we start that?
Honestly, the first time I ever saw it was on, was on a visit Big Ben brochure that, but they stopped using it a long time ago. And so I just then Alpine Downtown Association, now Business Alliance, this was right after they started, they started Alpine Heart of the Arts, they started. And so it was kind of an opportunistic thing, we then did some downtown banners that are now have been lost to the elements over time and use that and so when so I would say I started using it a little more when I launched the podcast, it's only been three, four years that I've that Alpine's actually started using part of the big bend as, since it's geographically. It resonates more than a hub, which was, you know, what was used fifteen, twenty years ago.
And then I was gonna ask, can you speak to how much H O T revenue is brought in by the city and then the county as well? I've heard they have.
I could not speak to the county, I don't know about their budget, but I bet the judge has an idea. We're between seven twenty five, seven fifty.
Seven seventy. Seven hundred thousand to seven. But we are utilizing fund balance this year for the continued improvements.
And then, so then all revenue was allocated this year?
Yes.
The four hundred K that went to expenses and everything else like that?
Yes, and that's in the budget that, that you guys saw, that was the, the grants was a piece of that and the rest of it is tourism director, visitor center and all those attendant expenses, so what would be available is fund balance.
Gotcha, so this would have to come out of fund balance. And so some capital expense, yeah, he's coming out of fund balance and then I was gonna say, we don't, like, the largest events are actually what, around thirty five to forty five, I guess, from the H O T when we invite and marketing's only a percent of those.
Correct.
So we've never spent this, we've only been one single marketing campaign.
Um, that is correct. Yeah, there's been a couple of years where we've been, we've been in the crunch where we brought in a lot and, and didn't spend enough and we had to and so I think twenty five thousand dollars, we did a video program where we got the video shot and it included distribution online ads. That's, I think that's the largest one, single campaign that we've done.
That was all my questions.
Okay, councilmember Stevens, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so a number of points, so I chair the
Yeah, so so a number of points, so I chair the Saul Ross Foundation Board.
Okay.
And we have a campaign bringing, focused on bringing in thirty to thirty-five million dollars into Saul Ross. In my view, Saul Ross and particularly with Carlos has spent a fair amount of time reaching out to Alpine and my view has always been, as Saul Ross goes, so was Alpine and vice versa. Uh so that's one point I'd make. Second point I'd make is, we ask the hot committee to start meeting quarterly to look at a lot broader strategic plan. And and in my view, this represents an opportunity to have a more strategic discussion about where are we trying to go and what's the strategic allocation of the hot funds that we have. Uh and that's, I don't recall, Chris, if we've got that date set, but we said we wanted it October, November.
Yeah, yeah, we have a date set, then I'm actually gonna have to reschedule as possible, but.
I'm the council member who supports in relation to that. So so I think those are are two important elements. I- i- in my view, I wouldn't say, my position would not say, no, I wouldn't pass it fifty thousand dollars. In fact, uh I I get to have Carlos every other week, back here at our meeting next Monday. Uh and so uh i- in my view, the the whole marketing discussion is a critical element. I I think that we as a council want to look and say, what makes sense? I think there's times we'd like to use the language and there are times we want to have our own language, because we're talking to different audiences. So we, my put, I'd look and say, what's the value out of spending X amount of dollars? What do we get out of that? Back to your point. I think that's the right dialogue to have, then we can make an informed decision. Is what we're asking for worth the value? I'd ask hot committee to go work that. Uh and I I presume, Chris, you'll work with Betsy, uh Asparza?
Uh, I'd be happy to.
So that's my view, Betsy is working the campaign.
Okay, yeah, well, I'll reach out to Betsy. I didn't, I didn't know, first I heard about it was the the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
See all the discussion, I'll talk to her, because I see her once a week. Uh and you guys go have a dialogue and figure out, and then you can come back with a good form recommendation.
That sounds good. Yeah, if we can find ways where we can extend the reach of their campaign in a way that is targeted, where our money is targeted towards hotel nights.
Yep.
It's a win, you know, if if we can get the word out farther and and it benefits our hotels and so it's legal.
Right.
Yeah.
Is Betsy part of this?
She is, we had a, it was the judge, myself, Carlos, Dr. Hernandez, who's the university president and Betsy Asparza that originally got together on discussing this.
She runs communications for Saul Ross.
I know, I just when Dr. Hernandez brought it up, he didn't mention Betsy.
Well, she she is.
She's the one.
Uh huh, okay. Well, yeah, I'll reach out. Councilmember Sandak, anybody else? Hey, thank you, I'm glad you were here. Thank you. All right, next up is uh my discussion item also, this is discuss issue with parking downtown and the possibility of partnering with Tech Start to strike parking spaces on the main thoroughfares, including Holland Avenue and Avenue E. And I put this on here because it's something that Jim Street is passionate about and he wanted to speak with council regarding this. So if you would like to come up to the podium, Mr. Street?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Yeah, I I have talked to three mayors, two city managers about this, this goes back quite a ways. When I, when the Downtown Association first got started, uh councillor, uh Stevens and I were our founding members of it. And we were, when we had our first events uh to bring people into into town, uh we noticed a lot of part of parking problems. And this had already been an issue with me, that you go to find parallel parking and people invariably park here and then three quarters of the car lanes, then later here, and then three quarters of the car lanes, another. And and I said, why don't we just stripe this? You go to the grocery store or any, any place where they've got a striped parking lot, people are very good about parking within, within striped spaces. And so I was told initially that, oh, well, these are state highway, state highways and we have to have Department of uh Texas approval. And I went to Chris Weber and he said, oh, I don't have a problem, he said, I'll be glad to give them the the city a letter saying they could do it, no problem, just have somebody contact me. Well, Chris is since retired and I have uh it's come up again. And so I talked to the new guy, Armando Rivera, and he told me that he was, he was all for that. As a matter of fact, there, they have a contract to put bike lanes on one eighteen to as far as Lockhart. And they'll have stripping machines out there, he says, why don't we just use our machine? If we've got a machine and a contractor here, it's a lot cheaper than to hire somebody to go out and do it initially. So he's certainly willing to work with us. I would just suggest that whoever make it or whoever needs to sit down with Armando and and work it out and 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 strip it, but you can go out there right now and there's a car that's about half a car length from the one in front of them. And and I did ask if Gio could send it, uh to make a slide, and he said it was too late for that. So I had him email or we, oh, you got an email, pictures, and I did pictures taken right out here in front of the civic center. And it shows kind of what I'm talking about.
Okay, Councilmember Stowe?
I have the same problem, and then you go to park and you can't park.
On the previous issue, uh yeah, we we created Heart of the Arts, which been become bumper sticker, as Chris said, it's on.
Okay, listen, listen, Mr. Street, let's stay on this.
Okay.
Since we're on this discussion item, no, don't, don't leave, don't leave. Okay, Councilmember Nance?
Uh I guess just a couple of questions, it'd be for Mr. LaSoya, and uh is there a, we have wreck coming from these, these areas? Is that a, an issue you know of as far as? No accidents from park, pulling out of parking or any weirdness there? Okay.
Now would you enforce it if there was stripes and they were all from?
I don't think there's a law.
I don't think there is.
Again, parking in the, if you, if you park outside the the park area, other than parking eighteen and fifteen inches away from the curb. That's the only.
There's no enforcement at the grocery store and people still stay with the stripes.
Right.
The stripes are there, there's.
We have a lot of accidents in parking lot quarters.
So the parking lot quarter is also private property.
Right, yeah.
I know that, I'm just saying, people generally do stay with it.
Councilmember Sandak?
I guess right now everything's uh striped for the parking on Avenue E and and Holland, they're white stripe.
The shoulder, is it?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about in between on the marking, but perpendicular to the curb, going out the width of the car, of the car line.
The thing, the thing you need to consider too, you're out in West Texas, you're gonna have a lot of a lot of bigger trucks, bigger than the than the marked areas. So I mean, there's a lot of difference in that vehicle.
Yeah, there, there, some of these pickups would would absolutely exceed the line, but I would have them way longer, my little cars a lot larger than my little car.
Right, right.
So so who would do the work? Would the county do the work or we the city would do the work?
I would, I would talk to Armando uh about it because he did offer to to contribute something. And then, and and that, and before he left, Eric said they had bought a striper, so I don't, I think.
So 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 we don't know the answer, Megan, we're down with Armando. My view is, I'm schizophrenic.
Aren't we all?
I think some markers would certainly help optimize the parking, there's no question about that. On the other hand, it's not enforceable, but my sense is people tend to be guided by the stripes.
Right.
And so from that standpoint, it's probably worthwhile, we're always gonna have them. The doggone horse trailer is gonna pull in and fill up the whole block. The horse trailer is gonna pull in and fill up the whole block anyway. So my bias would be, if you can get the county to do it and stripe it, it makes sense to go do it.
So that project isn't set to be in our area until the summer?
In December?
The summer.
So, okay.
Twenty twenty-four, this is where they're working one eighteen up to Jeff Davis County.
And I did speak to Armando, there was no offer of marking the tracks for us. And there was an indication that he didn't, he didn't have a problem with it. And that I would update him on all the different sections, because what I showed him was just one small area and not the whole area that goes all the way down, because that, it's not just the downtown, it it would make no sense to to do just two sections and not all the way down, because you have near the Robo Blues, you have all of that is all possible parking. Um, the only other thing that I, and I I did talk to you all about it, I don't know if it makes any difference because we can't regulate anything, um but I would like us to take into consideration handicap parking. If you're gonna regulate and put parking spaces, is the city gonna put specific handicap park? Right now, it's kind of an open to anyone, you you kind of.
You're gonna have to put it by the curb so they can get up.
So right now, we're not required to have handicap parking because nothing, because there's nothing marked. Is that what you're saying? And if we mark it, then we would have to?
I would just think it would make more sense, is if you're gonna designate parking spaces, that perhaps we designate a handicap park. And then we've done it for the Catholic Church, you know, we do it for other.
So there's not a state law that says we have to do that? I would think.
I don't know, transportation code four or five forty-five three oh three, you talked about parallel. Well, these are just conversations, um like I said, um of course, the other thing it it talks about is, you know, just ominous ordinance, would we want to put something in place to? But Armando didn't have a problem with it, but I did let him know that, because I only provided, provided him a little glimpse of the area in question. And that we would keep them updated on the whole. Because it is their right way.
My my view, why don't we just come back and look in our month, and the next month, we'll drive up down Holland and East Avenue, we take a look and see how bad it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that, then we're more informed of the process. We've all seen it, whether this wide, we've seen some closer, but it was an idea.
And I don't know who put the sign, but there is a sign at the very end that says, please move all the.
Yes, I've seen that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, right. All right, well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Street. Okay, moving on to discussion item number four. Discuss requirements to amend the city charter, discuss the need for council to review the charter and to identify necessary amendments and discuss what might need to be added, deleted, or what may no longer be legal or applicable. Megan has recently sent out an email asking for us to look through the charter and send her our suggestions by Friday. The twentieth, at five P M.
Friday? I think it was out last week.
I know that. Yes, okay, so guys would start looking through it, there's things that need to be done and I am, I don't mean to to put you in the spot, but what have you found about what needs to be done when we, for these amendments? As you and I discussed, different things, whether we had to have a committee, whether we have to go to vote, et cetera, and you've researched what we need to do.
So um it kind of goes both ways, we don't have anything specifying that we have to actually have a commission to amend our charter. And the state legislation doesn't say we have to have it either. Now, cities do choose to go that direction within their charter to ensure it gets updated regularly, which would be a recommendation I would make to include in this new one. Um, council basically can propose uh changes within the charter. Each change that is proposed has to be voted on. So you can't vote to approve the charter, you have to vote to amend each item to be changed.
Right.
So if you want to change where, for like the um annexation.
Yes.
Where it says we would take on the annexation, or like, we would just do it, that would be one proposal. So that would be one, and there's specific language, it has to be used for every change, and then the voters have to vote on every single one.
Kind of like the amendments for the state coming up in November.
So it's gonna be along the same I did.
Yeah.
And so the easiest way is for, get your feedback first. We know that there's just the legality ones, like the annexation. Um, there's other things that's been thrown around as far as term limits and do we want to put in a more identified rate for uh compensation for the council. Um, I would like there to be an amendment to include that there is an actual commission that meets every two years, because the city charter should be updated every two years. Um, you can only do it every two years, you can't, so when we amend it.
Two thousand and five, thank you.
And so um there's all kinds of things that should be looked at. Um, you have your basic information, but then you have your specifics with your city attorney, your city manager, your city secretary, you have your council. Um, our budget policy should really reflect with our charter and vice versa. So there's all these different sections that can be updated. Um, cities across the board this past year, um massive updates. Um, just going in and cleaning up, and there's some grammical errors, you know, those would have to be voted on as well. Um, so currently.
Voters have to vote if something misspelled.
Corrected.
Yes.
Um, so currently.
A lot of people don't do it.
The, the, the process is to get your feedback, because you guys may all be focused on one section and maybe that's what we do.
I'm gonna read the first one, though, y'all.
Um, but and like I said, if you're all focused on one section and then maybe that's what we do, we amend that section, and then in two years, we amend another section. Are we trying to do it all at once? Um, but that's a lot of, you know, proposals that have to be voted on. Um, but right now, I I know just some of the basic things that we've talked about, so I'd really like to get more of an idea of where you guys would like to go. I would like to look at the term limits for city council members, I think that's important. It's really hard to serve two years and and get a lot accomplished. Um, two, I'd really like to look at adding where it's reviewed every two years. Like, that, that's literally the charter, it said you have to review it and make the the changes. And then there's also adding the language, you know, and it's kind of sort of in ours right now, but you know, the state does supersede us and.
Right.
There, there's things that, you know, if the state comes back out, like they did with the annexation, we automatically will be able to cover us.
Yeah, and the current charter does make that very clear, so that is good. But it's been two thousand and five and it's time for us to 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 look at it.
So can we talk about sequence then? So you said it deadline for us to come back August or October twentieth? What's next after that and when would it go to a vote?
So that's the part I'm still researching. Um, I know that a couple of the cities I've talked to did it during the general election, which is in November. And that's when you get the biggest obvious group of people. Um, but I did notice that one city had theirs in May, which is their general election for. Um, so I just need to verify that and also I think it does determine what we're doing within the charter. Um, I know Gio mentioned that there may be some term limit um requirements that we have to follow, which may also determine how we vote.
But wouldn't that make more sense to do them in May with our election?
It would cost, it would save us money.
It would save us money, but I need to get the clarification on that one specifically.
Get back to us on that. Get back to me by Friday.
Six P M.
We didn't say six?
She has to get back to you by six.
Thanks, man.
Okay, Councilmember Nance?
Oh, I guess, I'm assuming it's every two years, because that's when the legislature meets, so we're just updating stuff in the Texas Legislature typically.
Sometimes it is.
Okay, and then the um the election would be in November coming up. Do they amend the charter within that time? Because we just came out of a legislature then, in between, I guess, summer and November? Whereas this one will be a long extended process, but the next, uh the ones in perpetuity. I mean, I'm wondering how much of a window is required between when the legislature provides the new, uh you know, mandates and everything else coming from and our amendment uh schedule.
I have not seen anything regarding.
Because I would say that would determine maybe November or May.
And a lot of cities, I am, it's, it really just depends on when they do it.
And I was gonna mention too, that this is a task, I think the previous council gave you, so we did, wasn't it to update the charter and everything else? So it's something that we need, it's important for us to do. And I guess I just need a little clarification, so are you saying then in every, uh, in every change we make in this, the council approves every change?
No, voters, the voters, so you, so we would, the verbiage has to be specific, just like it is the propositions right now for the state. So everyone would be, if one uses the term proposition. So every change you make is a proposition and that's what the committee votes on. So some of them may approve, be approved and some of them may not.
Right, well, it's kind of like what we're doing, what is it, nineteen amendments coming up in November to vote on, something like that.
And there may be just something, like I said, I know for sure we want to clean up and get rid of like the annexation. I mean, I do believe the term limits is important, I do believe creating um verbiage in regards to a mission or an ad hoc or some type of a committee that reviews this every two years. Um, because it doesn't just go in line with what's going on with the state, but also goes in line with the direction the city wants.
Councilmember Sandak, Councilmember Stevens?
One of the only things that would be helpful is when you get the timelines, we know. One thing that would be helpful is when you get the timelines, we know so we can think about that and do some process.
Councilmember Stokes.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, moving on. Discussion item. Number five, continue the discussion regarding the proposed changes, chapter twenty-three, city council to the Alpine Code of ordinances. Including updates to the order of business, updates to the rules of procedure and decorum for city council meetings. So we had um Councilmember Nance and our city secretary attend a T M L. And our city secretary came back with some great information that I would like for him to share with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so um like the mayor said, I did uh attend the T M L annual conference on October fourth to October sixth in Dallas. Um, and I did attend a presentation called Go Home Early, A Practical Guide to Streamline Meetings. Uh, that one was put on by Thomas Quat, Quat, it's hard to pronounce, but. Uh, he's a municipal lawyer and he has over fourteen years of experience as a city attorney. Uh, and he actually has a free ebook online on the, on his law firm website. Um, entitled the same as the presentation, Go Home Early, A Practical Guide to Streamline, Streamline Meetings. Um, so the mayor did ask me to just talk about some of the key takeaways that I got from that and um. One of them was that well-planned meetings run, well-planned meetings basically run efficiently. So the process of planning for efficient meetings should include several considerations, but likely the most important is a good planning process. Uh, and the presentation reiterated what I believe for quite some time, that good structure, clear rules. Non-ambiguous parameters and succinct guidelines are critical to an effective meeting. And standardizing the planning process makes, process makes it repeatable, consistent and easier for stakeholders such as residents, staff and council members to understand and adhere to. Um, the second takeaway that I have is scheduling considerations. Essentially, he explained that long meetings are exhausting and short meetings that follow just show a missed opportunity to have spread out the items. From a long meeting in a more efficient manner. And that really, you know, resonated with me. Um, it all comes down to efficient planning and in one question in his book that he talks about is. Whenever planning meeting to ask is, should some of these items be postponed in order to balance the member workload? And I think at times um that could definitely be the case. Um, the third one is legal review. In Texas, there are statutory consequences for mistakes in the agenda posting process. And the city attorney should have adequate time to make recommendations about the form, the content of the meeting agenda, the rightness of the items on the list and other tips. And the presentation really reinforced for me that the current agenda deadline and process does not provide the attorney's office with adequate, adequate time to provide feedback on the agenda or packet. Um, the fourth one was packet distribution. The presenter did recommend that the packet be dispersed to council at least five days prior to the meeting. But ideally seven days prior. Our current deadline does allow four days for council members to review the packet. Um, and the presenter also mentioned, you know, having ample time to prepare, um, sometimes up to two weeks to prepare an announcement. So the next one that really resonated with me was about incremental time improvements. Uh, the presenter did make recommendations that included using time limits throughout the meeting to streamline how long each section takes. And he went on to explain that small amounts of time saved throughout the meeting really add up in the end. Um, he did talk about five critical details and I'm gonna work back with Megan on that one. Essentially, just being proactive with the information that we have in the packet to really minimize the need for people to ask questions, just more transparent. Transparency in government. Um, he did talk about the consent agenda and how. Really utilize the consent agenda when possible, because any council member can always make a simple request to remove it, you know, to discuss it separately if if warranted. Um, I got some good information on agenda formatting tips. He um, he did provide some practical tips on formatting the agenda that I think would be great for our city to implement. Some of the uh tips included to provide help texts in italics at each section, which, you know, we've already done in the proposed agenda. And also implementing clear structure and making sure we adhere to the meeting rules to ensure fairness and limit liability. Uh, and then he did speak to to public comments and public hearings. He did recommend that the governing body only accept public comments and public hearings during designated sections. He went on to explain that it's systematically more difficult to stay on track when there aren't designated times for uh speakers to address the body. And he explained that it's not good practice to allow comments later in the agenda because allowing activities to interrupt business later in the agenda. Sets a bad precedent that communicates uh that meeting intended will be able to interrupt at any point to make the comment. So because of this, he also recommended that the mayor formally open and close public comments and public hearings to make it clear and concise when the speaking opportunities were open or closed. Uh, and he did recommend the standard time limit of three minutes, the use of public comment cards. And he reiterated the importance of the governmental body not responding or taking action during the sections. Um, but that's pretty much it. Those are those are the key takeaways. Um, I did send you all the PowerPoint and the book by email. If you'd like to review further.
Okay, okay, good. And so I guess what I'm asking is we have a deadline for what we see. As far as charter amendments, possible charter amendments. So how are we working this? What, what happens next? So that we can keep this moving forward, so that we can adopt something.
But I think everyone has provided some feedback in one form or another in writing, um, if not to myself and you, but then to just you. So now it's collecting all of the information and grouping it into the different sections of the chapter um that would need to be addressed. And then if you review what is being provided to you currently, if you wanna add any of those suggestions. And then sitting down and going through each section with, okay, these are the suggestions, having a conversation. Um, what happened last time is, you know, we, or Geo mostly did the work and presented it to you. Um, I would like it for you guys to kind of, what, what, this regulates you guys. Um, because it did, I mean, we're, we're back at the drawing table again. And we're redoing it again. Um, and trying to make improvements and 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 clean it up. So ideally, the next agenda on November, we could have. The group of all of the information and we could just attack each chapter or each section. Um, little by little to get it cleaned up. I know that you guys are not all gonna agree on any one thing.
Sure, we're not supposed to.
But it's hard for us when we're trying to put something together based on all of y'all's opinions. Um, and then take it to you and then it's the the back and forth. Um. So.
The last time I went back, I mean, I think five times before we approved one.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I I personally think a workshop would be good and I think the one key takeaway that I got from that presentation was. How critical and how this type of project is so important to, to everything that the council does. Just the the root of where everything takes place, so.
Right, this, this is, this is your. Your chapter, this is your rules.
Right, right.
And I, I, I know that we try to enforce them and and keep with them and and sometimes it's hard because there are some like, you know, we had our concerns over time limits and. You know, understanding that and, you know, I know that this individual recommends everything two weeks before the meeting. Um, he does have specific guidelines and what he thinks should be good, so I have to look at that. Because right now, you know, we're setting a deadline, you know, when they, well, this gentleman is recommending the deadline be two full weeks before the actual.
I think uh two weeks is pretty, is a lot for a town, you know, as small as we are. But I do think that the, we're, we are continuing to gain more responsibility, we're increasing transparency, we're doing more projects, we're having to do things that other, you know, past. Um administrations haven't had to do. Um, so I think the discussion's warranted and I think some extra time would certainly be helpful for my office. Change the city attorney's office as well.
Okay, and I know we've heard, um, I think two individuals have spoken uh on the chapter twenty-three and their thoughts. I also put out a Facebook survey uh with some options, what would cause them to be more likely, the public to attend the meetings. And the answer that was chosen the, the most with thirty-one votes was sometime other than five thirty. Someone suggested six o'clock. I don't know, so that's something for us to consider. Um, meetings no longer than one and a half hours, twenty-seven votes for that. Uh, day other than Tuesday, sixteen votes for that. I don't know, so that might be in our conversation too. You know, what, what can we do and keep that in mind?
So date wise, what do you all think would be a good date for a workshop?
No, I feel like we need to workshop it. Like you said, we need to get people to tell us.
Workshop before a meeting. That's convenient for me because I know I've gotta be here for the meeting.
How, how long do you think?
Well, I don't think this is gonna be a one and done. I, I think if we're gonna do a workshop, we do one at the next meeting and then we schedule another one. Um, because we do rush. And then we go back to the drawing board six months later, a year later. Um, so I'd like it to be where we have a consistent, honest conversation. So if we do a workshop, we can schedule it for the next meeting at four thirty. Um, and then, you know, put the timer, you know, we have an hour and we start from the very top and we work our way down. And then, you know, we, wherever we stop, we set like for the next go round. That gives us time for, as we discussed that, whatever section we get through, we can start changing the ordinance to reflect some of the, the conversation. And then the next workshop, you know, we do another section. And then while we're discussing and all that, you know, Geo can go back and I can go back and we can design that part of the ordinance. And then have a, a presentation to the council.
Right. Yeah, somebody had mentioned Thursdays would be a good day, but I don't know. So we need to hear from people. And even though there were some people that responded to this, I mean, thirty-one and twenty-seven and sixteen, that's, that's not enough. But that may be all that we can get. I don't know.
So we, we have to consider our schedules. I've created everything around Tuesdays, so Tuesdays are free. I have board meetings. I travel extensively, so we're gonna move it with our schedule first, otherwise.
We've worked our animal advisement, we've worked. And I'm gonna say, you know, personal time for the two of us to have a night off.
Y'all have that? We can take that away, we do.
Okay, Councilmember Sandak.
Workshop before the meeting.
Councilmember Nance.
I was just gonna speak on three things. Uh, one, just so people know kinda where I stand on it, it was. I would be against the invocation or the um moment of silence. I kinda, I'm okay with the way things are currently done. I've heard the public members speak against that as well. I haven't heard anything. Contrary, um, redactions. I was gonna see if Megan could just speak or Geo. So that the public kinda know when redactions uh, when those are brought in, so why we actually redact.
So we have some that are discretionary redactions and then we have some that are required by law, by privacy law. So um things such as driver's license, social security numbers, dates of birth, those are all things that we can automatically redact. We have to, we don't have discretion in that. Um, the rest of them are generally discretionary, uh but email addresses is something that we get often that we have to redact that as well.
Okay, and we had mentioned too, like if there was a security concern or something like that, like floor plans or anything else, sometimes that'd be a possible reduction. Okay, and then I was gonna mention too, on the deadlines that I fall, I was looking at our thing and I, I think it's our chapter twenty-three. But section twenty-three, six B, and we state that we have, we allow the public, the, the packets have to be presented twenty-four hours before the meeting. For the public. I would love to see that extended as well, because even before I ever ran for council or anything. You know, I mean, you get a five hundred page packet, like I wonder what's gonna happen tonight. And it's, I would love to see that on Friday if possible. So however far we need to move the deadline, four or five weeks in advance, I'm kidding. Whatever allows you guys to really to get that packet out on Friday, I think would be a great.
Councilmember Stokes.
I have thoughts. Okay, um, I'm in favor of a moment of silence. That's a personal, not, probably won't change my mind, but I am in favor of that. The redactions. You know, if we've got somebody applying for a board, and I'm gonna be real honest, I don't care what the driver's license number is. I don't care when their birthday is, I'm not gonna get them a present. I just need some, 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 some general information. So if there was a cover sheet on that that was included in the packet and you keep all the rest of it, then nothing would have to be redacted. Fix a sheet where they don't have to redact anything. Just a little information, that's all we need. We don't care. I don't care about all that stuff. I don't read it. I read one because he was born, he was a year old. That was the only reason that caught my eye. But I did call you and say, did you see how old this guy is? So that to me would, would do away with the, with the board redaction. The rest of it, I don't know, but if we can do a cover sheet on that, that would, that would do away with all of that. And I agree, if we could get it out earlier. Number one, I don't care when I have to give you something. When you tell me, Judy, this is due two weeks before this meeting, I'll go, okay. And I'll get it to you and if I miss it, I'll go, oh, well, let's put it on the next one. Nothing I put on is that important. That, that should revolve around a lot of other stuff, not me, not what I care if I'm gonna put on here. Uh, it doesn't matter to me. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, okay, Councilmember Stevens.
I think there's one thing that we need to consider and that's the longer planning cycle, which we've talked about. I have to admit, it's always a surprise when the agenda shows up. And when the agenda's done, we can't change it. I would hope we'd have a planning cycle that kinda looks out and says, hey, like, like the things we talked about here, chapter twenty-three. Let's put that out and so we know when it's gonna show up on the agenda so we can do our planning. And I almost think there ought to be a. Time where we can, we get a sheet at every meeting that says, here's the stuff coming up. We get back to Geo and Megan and say, hey, we got a whole bunch of stuff here, let's start moving stuff. So we are never surprised. It goes back to your point. We'd like to be able to share with people, these are the things coming up right now. I'm surprised this all get out and therefore, I don't know if I should put something on.
Right, and that's the point Geo was making with that presentation.
Two weeks is that bad?
I, I, I don't think two weeks is bad. Yeah, so anyway, I think we have to add that in our cycle.
Number one, just because we've always done this this way, doesn't mean we have to keep doing it. We can change it. If we don't like it, we'll change it back. We'll go, well, I hate that. You all know, I'll tell you, I hate that. And we'll fix it how we all like it.
So I think we're agreed on four thirty before the next meeting, one hour.
For Megan, it was dinner.
I provide you cookies.
Okay, that's election day, does that matter?
Uh, they're gonna be next door.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, so let's move on to action items. Action item number one belongs to the city manager. If you would read, please.
Confirm fifth clear twenty-three, twenty-four, five percent cost of living increase for the city secretary, Dopree Calderon.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to confirm his five percent cost of living increase.
Okay, I need a second. All right, discussion, city manager.
So I, I brought this to the council's attention because ideally, yes, council did approve a budget with a five percent increase across the board. For all employees. Um, but I do feel that uh the city secretary and myself, um, yes, we are employees. But we're not quite employees. And so I really wanted to present this to council so that council is aware. Um, the budget did include the five percent. I wanted to be transparent so that people didn't come back and say, oh, well, they're, you know, lining their pockets. Um, and let council really confirm and make the decision if this is acceptable. We didn't have the full discussion during the budget process, which is why I wanted to bring it back.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Nance.
Hi. I thought about this a long time and spoke them and I guess what I would rather see this money uh go towards. Uh, because we're all, everyone gets a five percent raise across the board. A five percent raise for Megan is seven thousand five hundred, a five percent raise for Geo is around thirty-five hundred, five points, five percent raise for someone that makes thirty thousand is fifteen hundred. So when I come back and I see that inflation's hitting the, the people at the bottom a lot harder than the ones at the top. But I don't wanna pull the resources and the assets because both of these people are doing great jobs. I'm extremely happy with the way uh all the work and the effort and everything else they put. I would rather see the money that would be earmarked from those positions. Instead of being into a salary raise, which will be another five percent raise next year, that's highly so, we've got two knee raises. Um, but this year I would rather see that money go towards something that makes their job easier, that reclaims those labor hours. So if, you know, if we were doing, I guess the way I describe it is, if we were digging a hole and we gave someone a shovel. And we just pay them ten dollars more an hour to use the same shovel to dig the same hole, you're really not getting any more out of your labor there. If you come and you buy them a jackhammer or give them a tool that can shrink their labor hours on that, then we're really focusing and at the same time moving into the twenty-first century on some things. I spoke with Geo about this summit T M L and he had mentioned something I wasn't aware of at all, which is uh meeting agenda software. So something like that and I was like, how many hours a week do you do for boards and agenda meetings? And whether that's eight a week, well, if he's making thirty dollars an hour at eight a week, that's. And whether that's eight a week, well, if he's making thirty dollars an hour at eight a week, that's two forty a week. Over, that's a substantial amount of money over the year, and would be under the amount of the, um, app or under the amount of the software. But you reclaim that as well, where you're not, you know, using a shovel to dig a hole. That could drive you crazy, would drive me crazy. I would rather see these, amend the motion or whatnot, in order to say, this money does stay with those employees. But they have the ability to utilize it in a manner that would, would make their job easier. It's a long story, but that was kind of where I was at.
All right, Councilmember Sanda. Councilmember Stevens.
Mayor, I talked to Gio too and said, for thirty-five hundred dollars, can you buy it?
Yeah.
So, unless we're gonna pocket it somewhere.
Would be, um, I think six thousand.
Six thousand would be, be, uh, thirty-five hundred for the agenda software. And a little under three thousand, I believe, for the boards and commission software. So you, but there would be a twenty-five percent discount on your first year. So your year over year would be under, uh, your year, your second year would be that price. Around fifty-five hundred.
Software is a service.
It is cloud-based, yep. And what that kind of does as well, looking into it, is when you were talking about scheduling a template. You can have that as a board where us as city council people or board members can add directly to that template. And it would do, I think, email notifications and everything else. So when you're talking about the, being alerted of the timetable coming back in. I mean, I just see certain aspects of what we're doing as a city that aren't. Twenty-first century. And at some point, we need to make that step into it, and I feel like this would be a good justification for that moment of it.
An agenda management software would really benefit our office. I think it would help, um. We spend a lot of times on agendas, packets, and things of that nature. Not only that, but I like Laura Gold had mentioned earlier, the OCR recognition would be more readily available in that type of software. So it would be able to have high quality documents versus the scanned documents that we do now. But to do that right now, and with like Adobe Pro or something, it would just, it'd take a lot of time. Lot more time, and it would be more difficult. And agenda management software would make it much easier for us to, to generate those high quality documents as a package.
So you're thinking of just improving the work-life quality with tools instead of? And what are your thoughts, Gio?
Um, you know, of course, I'm happy to accept the raise. Uh, additionally, I'd be happy to give it to my three employees because I feel like they deserve it. And lastly, I'd be happy to accept the, you know, it going towards agenda management software. If we're able to do that, I'd be happy with any of those. Outcomes, very happy.
Okay, and how would outcome number two work? We would give you the money for your department?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see them at higher rates. Uh, tonight we approved a job description for a new, um, you know, and take it, it is a supervisory position. It starts at fifteen. None of them are fifteen yet. Um, so you know, I have to recognize, well, what if they wanna go for that position, and I'm gonna lose them, they, they are really benefits to our department. Um, so I mean, I would like to see them make a little more, and if that was an option the council would consider, I would happily accept that as well, just to give my raise to my employees. But again, I'm happy to accept the agenda management software as well, or have that money go towards that because we spend a significant amount of time. And I've been working on a calendar so council can kind of see the different, um, the different boards every week of the month. And see what kind of that schedule looks like. We're always busy. We're always with, with one of the boards, and then we're looking at adding an additional one or two boards with the airport and transportation. It would really help out, I, I believe, um, with our workload and our quality of work. And, you know, being that we're in a small city. We wear many hats, so I oftentimes do things that other city secretaries wouldn't in bigger cities, write ordinances, write resolutions. Megan's office does a lot as well. Um, planning and zoning related items, reviewing laws regarding planning and zoning. The building official currently is the Intermodalities Director. So I'm not complaining, everybody has increased workflows, increased responsibility. But agenda management software would help our office be able to more effectively help the other departments and work as a team to do things like that.
Where would we find the other money?
When we spoke that we were a million hundred.
So we added, and we're gonna have a workshop, one million. The third party coming back with some recommendations.
We have to go up to the R I C first.
Yeah, but you've got five percent plan, and on top of that, you've got enough money to bring people with liable salaries. To get everyone to work the compression issue. And it's gonna take a couple of months to come down.
So first we have to select the firm, and then give them enough time to.
Well, I think if we gave them the, the, the agenda software, then you're benefiting your three employees also. You're taking a workload. You're helping their workload.
It would also benefit council and the board chairs because they'd be able to add their items through the software, you know, there'd be an approval mechanism.
Then we could see what all is on each meeting agenda so that we don't have a two-hour meeting and a thirty-minute meeting and a two-hour meeting, right?
I think it would be a benefit all the way around. It would, uh, resolve some of the feedback we've received about the OCR software or the higher quality documents, because I agree. Completely with those sentiments, it's just right now without software, there's just no way, like, it would, it would take a long time.
Right, right. Okay.
I would mention too, um, like, I don't, I have not sat through a webinar on the software, so I think that would be great to sit on the software and see if it is gonna. Tick all the boxes, because it may not. And if that's the case, then we would need to know before we spend this amount of money, um, make sure it's a back scratcher that scratches our back. Um, and coming back to the other side, because Gio's just half of it, back with Megan, I feel like a raise, we can pay. Money towards the salary, she's doing a great job, everything else, but we're paying her more money to be just as stressed and work the same amount of hours as she has done this year. At some point, I think it would make sense to actually find, if she, she's the only one that knows her job. Find a tool that can either flatten those hours a bit, or, you know, provide some kind of work-life balance, something, and only she, she knows that.
For Gio, yeah, for this item. The quality work or life work balance.
Do you have any, um, you know, how do I say, any preference on those? I know, um, I didn't wanna, with the employer raises, I don't know what you think would be more fair. Like, if you have a preference on agenda management versus giving my employees my raise.
Um, it's gonna make me sound cold-hearted, but I mean, we're trying to be consistent across the board with employees. And not every director is gonna say, oh, yeah, here, take my raise. Um, I don't wanna.
You're, you're helping them out by giving them the software. You're making their.
And that's why.
It may not be a lot, but a little bit, it'll make it easier.
And I recognize that, so that's another reason why agenda management software would be good at it. If that's, if that's acceptable.
Well, and we're putting in the, the process to change everyone's pay and to make it better. And so, long run, I mean. I think the process would be better than.
So I can amend my motion. Okay, I wanna amend.
Okay. So what would you like to amend it to?
My motion to not give Gio a five percent cost of living raise, but, but, um, give it to him toward, um. An agenda software.
Okay.
Is that what I want to say?
That should do. All right, I need a second to, um. Put the money towards the agenda software.
I'll say, I'll make a second.
Okay, any discussion on this amendment?
And you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor to amend, to, for the amendment to have the software, please raise your hand. Okay, it passes unanimously. The five percent cost of living will be used for the software. Okay, thank you, Gio. All right, so action item number two, city manager.
Confirm fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, or five percent cost of living increase for the city manager meeting.
Okay. Do you wanna start the discussion, or you wanna just leave it to us?
Confirm the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, five percent cost of living increase for the city manager.
I need a second. All right, so discussion, Megan.
I have heartburn about this.
I'm sure.
Um, I, I really would like to know your guys' opinions first.
I'll break the ice. You're the cold-hearted one. That I, I feel like, you know, that raise of seven thousand five hundred could go substant, could go a good distance towards. Something with your creativity to find a way to utilize that in your job, in a way that doesn't. Just go straight into a bank account, some software, or something towards finance or anything else. I think you know your job best, and you know where this money can be spent best. To alleviate some stress or hours that you're throwing into your job. So I would amend the motion, uh, ultimately, but after discussion.
Okay, so you're thinking along the same lines of what Gio has done with them, okay?
You want all ours? Um, I don't mind giving you the money, I didn't mind giving it to Gio, or we wouldn't have done it in the budget. Um, I do think if there's something, if, if you know something that's seven thousand five hundred dollars that will help. Help you and alleviate something. Buy it. But that's my opinion. I don't wanna take away your money.
Whenever you want.
Not for seventy-five hundred dollars. Councilmember Stevens.
Again, schizophrenic me. I, I can see the merit of giving Megan that with a five percent. We did talk about it as part of the budget process, that's my basic acceptance. I do think it's worthwhile on an annual basis to look at comparative salary data for possessions like Megan's. And I don't think we've done one in the last couple of years. Uh, but my put is right now is, I, I'd say go for the five percent. And I think somewhere in our next cycle, in particular, when we come back with the consultants coming in. When I look at market data, that's the struggle we have with all of our employees. We're not paying our employees enough, because we are behind the partner. And so, to Gio's point, and, and we all agreed. You know, the goal from thirteen fifty an hour to get started, the market rate, and having been with the business lines, done the survey, Kathy, you're part of all that, and then it was fifteen dollars an hour. That's what people are starting at.
Yeah.
Okay, and we've got to work that compression issue, and I hope we move quicker on that process. And in the meantime, I support the buyers.
I would say one last thing, um, just so everyone has all the data. I reached out to one city close to us, they're a third of the population, I won't say who, and that city manager makes just under a hundred thousand. So that's closest market data we have.
So, no, I've done the data before. I've looked at a hundred cities, Texas, okay, and so, city manager is competitive in there. And I guarantee you, those numbers are going up faster than we think they're going.
We did, we did data.
Seventy all the way to over one fifty, uh, you're right, there are a few variants.
It's, it's high as two fifty for this role. Yeah, for this size city.
You need to remember, right now, Megan is also our finance director.
And the other city, I believe they have finance director as well. Uh, but coming back to it, also those cities in those areas might be high growth outside suburban, suburb areas, or maybe not rural areas.
Uh, it, it's really interesting the data that's out there. I'll share it to you, I can pull it back up again, because I, having lived this stuff for ten years, uh, it's easy to grab.
Yeah, I can get it too. Remember, we put it in all those packets.
Yeah. The last thing I was gonna mention was, coming back into, uh, looking at the pay and everything else like that. When we do, I do agree with Mr. Stevens on having a study to see where we're at on all this kind of stuff. We currently don't have a finance manager, but we have been tasked with finding a finance manager. So we will be paying somebody doing both jobs, that elevated wage, not elevated, because you are doing all, every bit of the work for those two jobs. But if that job partitions over this year at some point, then we are statically set at that new salary. No one ever asks for a salary below the current person's job. So I would say, by postponing that, we are buying the time within that year, in case we can find somebody, which would be the greatest thing you could ever do for Megan. Would be finding somebody that actually handled finance work for her. That, that money, that pot of gold there to, to drive towards that position. Which I would say, we come right back, and if, if there was managed service provided from that or anything else, we, we've looked at other ideas. Of what that could be. But when we do tie up that money, that money lives in perpetuity in that salary. Forever.
Okay. Comments? Okay, comments, comments? All right, are we ready to?
No, Megan has a comment.
Comment, okay.
So, I, and I want the public to understand as well, when I took the position, I didn't get a raise. I got the raise almost two years into the position. And you're right, it's the market value, and where are we at, and what's the comparison? Um, if there's heartburn within council, the only thing I've ever asked and spoken to Darren and the mayor about is. I'd like the money invested back into me. Because I do pay a lot outside of what the city provides, to, to give back to our community. I, I pay for a lot of my trainings. So, I mean, yes, I would like the five percent cost of living increase, because I'm going to turn around and invest it right back in the city. By taking on the additional trainings that I want. But I know with the budget we have, you know, we're limited, Gio and I do share that. So, I, I mean, ultimately, it's gonna go back to the city. But if the, if the council wanted to make an amendment like they did with Gio, I would just ask. That this be an additional increase in my professional development.
I liked about our amendment as it was presented.
Okay. All right.
I don't think you actually made a motion to amend.
Are we ready to call for the question?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed, please raise your hand. All right, so the motion carries for the five percent raise for the city manager with three. Voting to confirm and one voting against. Hey. All right, moving on to action item number three, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty-two, three dash one zero dash zero four, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Recycles Day Grant.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for. To approve resolution twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Okay, twenty, twenty, twenty-three dash ten dash oh four, authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Recycle Days Grant Program.
Yeah, ten dash oh five. It's ten dash oh five. Oh, was it oh four? Okay, I need a second. Okay, and discussion, city manager.
Um, so Adalina does a great job trying to find any and every available grant that can help her provide assistance to her department. Um, this one is through the Keep Texas Beautiful program. Um, the city does currently hold a bold level status and have been awarded several times in the past. Including the beautiful Welcome to Alpine signs, um, which was a grant award provided by them. Um, this particular grant is to help us update and improve our recycling stations and areas. Um, there are pictures included in the grant that outline where we would like to add some additional recycled bins. Um, there is a cost estimate for this grant as well. Um, and you'll notice that, that yes, the covers for the recycled bins need possibly a little bit of money. Um, but this would make improvements within our community and hope to encourage original recycling, um, throughout.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens.
So I have, th- these are new bins.
So, so.
Cause I looked at the pictures, they're like fifty-six gallon bins, and I'm thinking. We fill up fifty-six gallon bins in a nanosecond around here.
Um, so some of them aren't purchasing new, and some of them are just replacing the lids. Um, those kind of deteriorate, that break, gather the back legs over the top part. Um, our recycle team, our environmental service team does, uh, pick these up regularly and empty them out, and they do have a schedule. As long as they have staffing. So sometimes the staffing does become shorthanded.
Do the recycle people come in and do it? They come get it?
Our team does. And so this is something that Adalina feels that it will help benefit not only her team, but the community as a whole. It's really updating our current.
And. Uh, do we actually make any money recycling, or eventually goes to a company?
So we make zero in regards to recycling. Our contact with T V S allows them to manage and handle all of the recycling. The idea is to reduce the amount that goes into the landfill to extend the lifespan.
But does that actually happen, is like, real quick?
Um, I can't answer a hundred percent. I do know, um, metal, aluminum are. Actual money worthy, um, paper has been a little bit harder. Um, they did recently, due to unfortunate weather events, had to offload a bunch of the recycled cardboard into our landfill. Uh, because once it's, you know, ruined, you can't recycle it. Uh, but they try really hard to, to make sure whatever. The weather. So what they do is all of the recycled material gets basically. So what they do is all of the recycled material gets basically box the garbage, how you wanna define it, and gets put to Austin. And from there, they outsource it to whoever the recycling companies offer. It's not a moneymaker currently, no.
Okay, so, but this is, this grant request is open in other people's money.
One question, so did that end here, I put a square red, we don't cover overages or shortages on this? I see the grant was for, or the class of like five thousand three hundred. So if we were awarded three thousand, does that mean we're gonna cover the two thousand?
That's an option. Um, part of Adalina, Adalina's priority projects for the year, you would include different levels of recycling. Um, she could utilize her own budget, or she can reduce the number of bins in that that in locations to meet within the confines of the budget.
The only other thing I'm just gonna mention, the lids are three hundred and five a piece. I did not know that recycling lids are pretty, pretty expensive.
Recycled plastic is not, you know.
And you said this is gonna give us additional locations.
So there are a couple new, uh, locations.
So the recycle place to recycle?
The blue containers, I believe there may be a couple green ones are for recycled.
Good to know.
I mean, it's actually recycled material.
What's put in there, yes. So there's not the actual thing we're buying. No, 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 no. Okay, we're buying the containers for people to be able to recycle.
Councilmember Sedate.
So how many locations?
I think there's five or six. They're throughout the town. Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of approving the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash ten dash oh four, authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Recycled State Grant, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary passes unanimously. That's what we have approved the grant. All right, moving on to action item number four, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash one zero dash zero five, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Water Development Board Asset Management Program for Small Systems.
I need a motion. I need a second. Any discussion, city manager?
Um, so this isn't the first time we've applied for this. Um, the city actually used the Texas Water Development, uh, Board's Pilot Program and went after our own RFP to get an engineer to help us with the asset management side of things. Unfortunately, it didn't produce the end results that we had hoped for. In twenty twenty-two, we also applied for the award again and did not receive it. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the application had been opened up for both water and wastewater. It is for small systems, which we do qualify. So basically what this grant, um, our program will allow us to do is they will help, they will provide an engineer to help us have an asset management program. This will be the 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 layers to the S R E system. This, this is the G I S, the geographical information. Um, how big the lines are, how old the lines are, what material are they are. Um, any information we really need. Um, but then it also, the other side of it, it also produces a tangible checklist. What are we gonna do? How are we gonna replace it? What is it gonna cost us? Where are we at? Um, and that's the part which we really need. Um, we talk about planning for the future, it's like, well, where do we start? Well, what assets do you have? Well, we know we've got pipe in the ground. Um, and this will kind of help us if we get this grant to go in that direction, um, without it costing the city. Except for eighty hours of staff time. That is easy, trust me. Um, myself alone could probably get them that overnight. Um, but there's enough of us that are invested in wanting to see this happen. Um, the exciting part is it's being, um, proposed for both water and wastewater. And so we have the two applications included in the package.
All right, councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Nancy.
This, uh, was in our T M L, um, subscription, uh, when I first heard of it, but for us to not receive, it probably shows you that this is a problem all across the state of Texas for rural, air, small and rural cities. Uh, hopefully we get it. It was wonderful.
Councilmember Sedate, councilmember Stevens.
Just, uh, so what's the value of the service they provide?
So if we're, um, we did this and came back at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. And that was in eighteen ninety.
Okay, so this basically means that we're someone else helps.
All right, let's call for the question. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Hey, city secretary passes unanimously. Uh, twenty twenty-three dash ten dash oh five, resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Water Development Board. Okay, moving on to action item number five, city manager.
Approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four funding request from the Children's Advocacy Center of the Big Bend for allocation of funds, five thousand dollars to assist with services in the city of Alpine.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four C A C of the Big Bend allocation of five thousand dollars.
Okay, I need a second. All right, discussion, city manager.
So the city council did approve within the budget five thousand dollars to be advocated to the children's advocacy group. I ask that this be put on the agenda, um, in light of conversations during the budget process in regards to nonprofits. Um, we do have a contract with the public library. We do have a contract with, um, the Family Crisis Center. Um, we have supported them over the past several years. We do not have a formal contract, but I wanted to make sure the council was on board with with awarding these ones.
Have they provided us with any information? Have they come to do any presentations? Is there somebody here tonight?
I told him to be here.
Okay, good, good. Would you please come to the podium for us? Thank you. And just give us your name and affiliation.
Good evening, I'm Shanna Spence Sullivan. I am the founding director of the Children's Advocacy Center of the Big Bend twenty-five years ago. So it's a very important organization to me. Um, Daryl is on, uh, well, he's law enforcement, and so we have, we work on a multidisciplinary team. And so what we do is we provide forensic interviews, um, family advocacy, court school, follow-up, pay staffings, but we re, we, we, excuse me, we reca, require all of our team members, law enforcement, CPS, prosecution, mental health and medical professionals to be on board as well.
You have anything to add to that?
Oh, yeah, so. You know, one of the things, being in a rural area, especially out here, um, we are blessed to have Shanna uh, with the, with the C A C, we're blessed to have the crisis center, we're blessed to have a hospital. I used to teach a course in child abuse, uh, investigation, and I did a course in Del Rio, and they didn't have what we have here in our little town. And so, uh, you know, when I started working with Shannon twenty-five years ago, it was, uh, I really didn't understand. I was just like, all right, this, this is just came to, to do our, our thing. Um, but when I started teaching the course in twenty eleven, I was like, I'm like, what do you mean you don't have this stuff acceptable to you? And to have this, this it's on, uh, uh, out here, it's uncalled for. So we're blessed to have her and and her services to Alpine. Uh, she provides services for as far as the ways as, uh, El Paso, all the way to Del Rio. But her main area, of course, is the, is the tri-county area, I think.
Plus Terrell County.
Plus Terrell County. And so, uh, she just takes care of everybody out here and we, we couldn't do the job that we do without her, so.
So unlike some of the other nonprofits, um, we are actually regulated by the Texas Family Code. We have a chapter in there, chapter two sixty-four that you know, gives us our mandates, who's required to be on our board, who's on our multidisciplinary teams, um, and what, what our functions are. Um, so I do the forensic interviews and that's the main thing. So when we get a child in and ninety-nine percent of the children we see are sexually abused. And so we do a forensic interview, I record that. Our team members that I named are all present during the interview and they're watching through a lot. They're watching the interview live through a television monitor in another room. So this helps with the keeping the child from having to tell their story over and over. If we didn't exist, they'd have to go to law enforcement and then to CPS. And so this way, everyone's there. And once I've gone through the interview as best I can, I break from that, I go in and they get an opportunity to have me go back in and clarify the questions they need for their investigation. And so we also don't take walk-ins. So any child, you know, we're not like advertising for business. So any child that comes to us has to have an open investigation.
It prevents revictimization of the, of the child. When we do this one interview, it's recorded. You can, we review it and make sure that everything's there for us. And you know, one of the things, when we do our, our police investigation, we have, we have to have the elements of the offense. And so, so when she comes in and reviews it with us, we say, oh, well, you're missing this. See if you can get the location better of where the offense occurred. Um, and we do a lot of, uh, courtesy investigations to kids move to Alpine and we have to get the investigation done for another agency. So we'll do those courtesy investigations. And then, all right, we're not from, trying to think of a recent one.
Houston.
Houston.
Yeah.
We did, we did the higher tier one, the, the courtesy of those. A Houston area, and so we don't know the area, so explain to us where this happened. And so it's, it's, and she has to be able to build that report with the children to get this information from them. And, uh, it's great.
And what's nice about the recording as well is if the judi judicial process takes a couple of years, and this offense happened when the child was ten and they're now fourteen, they can show this to the jury in some cases, and they can see, you know, this was the actual baby when it happened and not a seventeen-year-old girl or something, so.
We have actually a case coming up two weeks, I think, uh, from twenty eighteen. And so that kid's now a teenager that that's got attitude and, 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 uh, doesn't remember every, everything of the video or the interview from, from more than five years ago. And so that gives them the opportunity to, to recall everything. Unfortunately, she has, she's gonna have to testify, so, but it's, it's there for them.
And we also receive all of the CPS statewide intakes that are called in to report abuse. So those come to us and, well, not all of them, but for their, for our area. And so my program manager reads through every one of those. And if it meets our criteria and it hasn't gone to law enforcement or CPS yet, we can reach out and tell them, hey, we need to get this kid in. They need a C A C. And we can, you know, make sure that happens and get them in as quickly as we can. And then we follow up with, uh, making referrals for a Sane exam. We've contracted with U M C in El Paso because we don't have local Sane anymore here, but, uh, so then, uh, we also provide trauma-informed therapy services free of charge for the victim and the non-offending camp, family members.
Five thousand dollars is the part.
And also, we reinvest, um, I send law enforcement to training every year at our cost. And so I'm reinvesting in our officers and our team members, you know, twenty thousand dollars every year.
Okay, councilmember Stokes.
Well, I don't know, I worked with Shannon for nineteen years and ten months, and they do a great job. They're, like Daryl said, if Shannon wasn't here, these kids would just get revictimized over and over and over and over. Daryl would have to do something, and they'd have to go to El Paso and do something, then somebody up there would have to do it. It, it would be horrible. So we're very lucky that, that she's still around.
Thank you. Councilmember Nancy?
No question.
Councilmember Sedate.
Thank you for your services.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, thanks. I just have a question. Is caseload flat up or down?
You know, we saw a significant decrease after COVID. I was really worried. We went a quarter without seeing a child and we had never done that in twenty-five years. So I was thinking, oh goodness, what's happened? And I knew that it, the abuse hasn't stopped. Um, we just weren't getting those outcries for whatever reason, but numbers are up. Last week, I did seven interviews.
My desk is full of CPS intakes right now, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for having.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, passes unanimously, city secretary, the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four funding for the Children's Advocacy Center. All right, um, action item number six, city manager.
Authorize the city manager to waive payments totaling twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents from Brewster County for fire call payments under the interlocal agreement from July twenty twenty-two to February twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to waive the payments, owing twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents from Brewster County for the fire call payments to the, to the county.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll start the motion.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
So the city of Alpine entered into an interlocal agreement with the county in February of twenty twenty eighteen. As part of that, um, agreement, the city managed the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department and all of the expenses. And then we sent them invoices for the fire calls that were located in the county based on the information provided by the fire department. Um, so they were invoiced. Um, there was some miscommunication, um, in line with when we term, or the county terminated the contract in February twenty twenty-three. And the city and the county entered into the agreement to form a board to manage the fire department in May of twenty twenty-three. I was able to provide all of the invoices and get them off to the county when we learned that there was some miscommunication in regards to the invoices and the board and what had been discussed. Um, so the county has asked that the remaining invoices be waived. Um, I'm asking council's permission to do that under our ordinances on collectible debt. Um, because of the amount, I can't waive it. Um, the council would have to.
Okay, councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Nancy.
Yes, looking at the, uh, the invoice here, so even the first page, um, there's six different times that this was. And that's a total of a thousand and forty dollars-ish. What are we billing them for? Just so I know how to read this invoice.
So we bill them, so the invoice reads, it's there by quarters, and this is just the first page to a series of them for this quarter. So it's the date of the fire call, the time they were dispatched to the time they returned, the number of responders that responded to the fire call. B R is brush one and B R two is brush two, so it's the equipment that they utilize. The rate is the rate for the first responders is what we pay, or, or we use to pay the first responder, ten dollars a call. And then the equipment, that rate is the rate utilized by FEMA. So that's what they have scheduled for using a brush truck. And then the amount is the actual rate times the amount of time it took. And so each one of these little sections is a fire call that was in the county. And so the fire department does submit, or they did submit fire call logs for every call, whether it was in the city, in the county, if it was a parade, if it, whatever they really responded to. And so this is multiple quarters of all. Um, since the contract was turned in February, that's when the invoice was filed.
So the, this was sent out in August, so that the July, July first was the, so this is from calls from July first and on.
Yes, up until the contract was terminated.
Was.
February twenty twenty.
Um, and I guess I'm gonna, is there any, um, context where the county's forgiven debt from the city or ever in the year, even though it's always not, it's never worked? Um, I mean, we don't share services, so has there ever been something like this, or you're kind of just wondering?
Not surprising. And Greg Kinnington, Judge Kinnington is here if you want to ask additional questions on the.
Actually, gotcha. I don't think I really have any questions.
Okay, councilmember Sedate. Councilmember Stevens.
My, my comment is, the, the good news is we've now entered an agreement that I think much more integrates what we're trying to do from a fire protection standpoint. I'm with you, Megan. You'd like to get the dollars. Money's money. However, in this case, I think it's about working the relationship. And I think we're gonna get a heck lot more out of the county, the twelve thousand dollars, as this thing all comes together. So I support the making this move.
And I'd like to point out that we are, we have already gotten a heck of a lot more than twelve thousand dollars. Because with the new board, the county splitting the cost with us, what were we paying originally, like eighty-nine thousand a year?
We had budgeted seventy-seven and we went over a budget, so we were roughly at a hundred grand.
And so now it's forty, forty, forty thousand dollars. So the city's saving forty thousand dollars there. And then what was it? There was a hundred and eight thousand dollar.
Two hundred and something that's in reserves, um, that we don't have to allocate to the fire department and council can reallocate that, which already have ideas.
Yeah, so we're, so we're already saving that too. The county agreed to let us do that. So I think that's, that's definitely a win for the city, uh, versus writing off the twelve thousand dollars that they let us do that in that agreement.
I just have to make it formal because it, it. I just have to make it formal because it, it, for me, it's an accounting.
Right, right, yeah. It's your job and you like it.
I hope you like it.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's call for the question. All in favor, please raise your right hand and this is to waive the debt. For twelve, for the county, all right, passes unanimously. City secretary, we're waiving payments totaling twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents from Brewster County. All right, so this leads to city council member comments, councilmember Stokes.
Uh, thanks, Shanna. Um, I'm glad our guys are getting all these, these things that they need. Um, I'm glad Geo's gonna get some kind of software. I don't know what the OCR stuff is because I'm not a techie person, but it sounds really fun. So, yeah. Finance department, Abel, are you outrunning a weed eater?
Thank you for that.
Thanks. And the P D's also got uh some little thing at the visitor's center, so. It'll be fun.
Nothing. All right, councilmember Nance. Councilmember Sinaté, councilmember Stevens.
Uh, I'm looking for the workshops.
Yes, yes. And so remember, we have the water workshop on Tuesday, December fifth at four thirty. The wastewater workshop on January sixteenth at four thirty. I'm looking forward to that since we'll have some expertise also in the realm on. On helping us as we plan, how, well, not that we're not, you know, people who've studied. The real experts, um, and yes, and I want to thank all of our city employees for.
Workshop November seventeenth.
And yes, workshop November seventeenth for.
The charter.
Yes, yeah, yeah, for the father. And no, in chapter twenty-three. Yeah, chapter. November seventh is the, yeah, it's the charter, yes. That's okay, no problem. Yes, and I want to thank all the employees because they all do wear hats. I mean. Abel's out there running a weed eater around the waste treatment plant. In addition to his duties at the airport, so thank you. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you. Of course, thank you.